Work session meeting of October 5th to order. Public work, individuals may address the city council. On items not included on the agenda, speakers are required to state their name and address for the council records and limited remarks to prevent it from us. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on the item discussed at this time, but may place it on the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Lang at 16542 Riverwood Drive, and I just wanted to address, I saw on the agenda there was this discharge of firearms and city limits issue, and I, council talked about it briefly last, I believe it was the last meeting. And I just want to offer my grant writing services and fund writing services, and I know Chief Chalmers is going to talk, if there's some funding that needs to keep the ordinance in place. I don't like being bolted out of bed in September at 6:00 a.m. when I don't have to get up, so I just assume keep the ordinance as it is, and if there's anything I can do to help make that happen, if it's, I understand it's difficult to police, and I would just assume other methods to keep that ordinance in place. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks Kathy. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Lois Machi, 1383 479 Street. The reason that our group is here tonight is to let you know that many people in the Little Falls area are very concerned about the planned demolition of Hurley Hall and the future of the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls. Hurley Hall, a picture of what I've handed out to you, is the first permanent building built on campus and was built in 1891. Hurley Hall's tremendous history is that it is the center for which many important community ministries started, and that have probably affected the lives of everybody sitting in this room. The convent, chapel, motherhouse, St. Gabriel's Hospital, St. Otto's Nursing Home, St. Francis High School, St. Gabriel's School of Nursing, St. Clair's College, and an orphanage. Even today, the building is being extensively utilized. Many sisters are living there. Silver sneakers classes and yoga classes are both being held in the building. There are some massage rooms on one of the floors and a number of private offices. Hurley Hall is an irreplaceable and beautiful spiritual home, representing many Franciscan principles architecturally and artistically, and is of considerable meaning to many in the community, including graduates of their programs. In 2002, the city of Little Falls paid someone to prepare reports to the Minnesota Historical Society, nominating Hurley Hall as a local landmark. Hurley Hall is also eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. After an astonishing 124 years, Hurley Hall's original roof needs replacement, and a few code upgrades are needed. Funding and options are, I repeat, are, available for the sisters or another entity to do this and more if needed. This has been verified by many historic preservation professionals. This funding would bring many much-needed design and construction jobs to the community. A generation ago, the Franciscan Sisters of Little Falls had the thought to sell St. Gabriel's Hospital, St. Otto's Home, and the Urban Apartments, so the buildings could remain active in the community and the Little Falls Franciscan Sisters could receive a much-needed stream of income. Hurley Hall could provide an additional stream of income. If they did not reuse the building, the Franciscan Sisters should consider selling Hurley Hall and save themselves the expense of demolition and removal while still being able to save the landmark building. People have certainly inquired about purchasing the building utilizing these programs. There were a couple of studies that were done for the Franciscan Sisters years ago, but when checking, we have found neither of them gave information on financial options such as tax credits, grants, and other financial incentives that are regularly utilized to help buildings in worst conditions and deaths all over the country. And I think my three minutes is probably...
Three minutes are up, right there.
So, part two coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just comment on this just quickly, because I know we don't discuss it, but I just want people to know that I haven't committed to either side. I have spoken with Lois on this, and my name on the bottom just indicates that I am willing to listen on behalf of that group and communicate with the sister be if needed, so I just wanted to make that clear, that was an endorsement.
Good evening. My name is Rich Machi, and I'd like to finish up this paper reading of this for the Franciscan Sisters of Hurley Hall. The Minnesota Sora Society, the preservationist in Minnesota, the mayor of Little Falls, Greg Zelko, and all these professionals with substantial experience in the historical documentation have repeatedly offered assistance to connect the Franciscan Sisters to many available resources and programs that have been turned away by their leadership team. Yet, programs are financially stronger than one other building such as the Buckham Building and the Academy of the Holy Angels in Little Falls where we have located. We want to ensure that certain codes and ordinances are followed to maintain the local landmarks and heritage preservation, which are located in Chapter 2, Section 33, and Chapter 5, Section 6. The demolition of this local landmark is supposed to be renewed and improved, and this has not been yet tackled. The local city will call the local reservations and encourage its preservation to ensure that the Franciscan Sisters that made a robust footpath there deserve the building and go through the proper new channels that require a public or private property owners of landmark buildings. The local Franciscan Sisters who worked with the people who have offered expertise for historic buildings realize the fact that this building affords to so many Franciscan Sisters in the community, and that is reusful to form, excuse me, with the form for shared goals. I would say even Franciscan goals of preserving, if replaced from early heritage, continue to provide sisters with a place to live on campus, to remain and live long together with the community, prevent your building in quite good condition from becoming a constant needless environmental waste to landfill, and provide a sustaining income for Franciscan Sisters to continue their cherished ministries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question? Has anybody else got to or phoned in their support for saving Hurley Hall?
Yes, I did receive at City Hall a phone call. Thank you for reminding me that for two residents in favor of saving Hurley Hall.
You can add me to that list as well.
Thank you.
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. I'm going to talk tonight about this billboard that's very troubling. The information that's in these two packets is all the ordinances going back to the beginnings of the city as far as I can find. In none of these ordinances were billboards within the city limits ever allowed. It states in the information that was sent or presented at the meeting here on April 18th that the current lease on the billboard that's on city property now, that this lease expired on September 30th of this year. That matters. According to this document from 1974, when the signed ordinance that was in place, it had some amendments, but was in place at the time when I was told to take my signs down in 2011, under this ordinance, 801, 1974, that Jerry Lockner talked to me about a number of times, no billboards were ever allowed. That date precedes when Velasquez had this, and it precedes the date of the sale from the Velasquez's to the Gottwalt's, and then also from the Gottwalt's to the city in 2006. There was an ordinance number 37, or 36, rather, prohibiting billboards in the city that prohibited any new billboards to be erected. That was in 1994. This information that's in the packet tonight states, since the structure was in existence prior to the adoption of the ordinance, the billboard is considered a legal non-conforming sign, and such is allowed to remain. I think that is an inaccurate statement. Like I said, unless someone here, including a city attorney, can prove, can show proof of that billboards were ever legally allowed on city property or in the city limits, then I think you should proceed with this, and if not, I think you're violating law. Under your own ordinance number 35, fifth series, which was in place up until the new signed ordinance was enacted on July 2nd of 2012, and including and through the time you amended it in September of 2013, no allowance was ever made for billboards on city property or within the city limits. Item number F in this 35, which is in place before the new ordinance was enacted, states F billboards, billboards shall not be permitted in any zoning district within the city, except a specifically allowed within this subsection of the law.
Three minutes are up, Robin, thank you.
Item number three ordered by the Fairgrounds. That's the only exception. Good for thought.
Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing that, we'll move on to regular council informational items. Proposed 2016 public improvement project. Mr. Tenen?
Good evening. I'm going to run through a couple of slides here. I won't labor these too much because we've seen them a number of times, but this is just kind of stepping through how we came about the projects that we're looking at in 2016. This is our sanitary sewer map. The green is the old clay pipe or the clay pipe. The red is the PVC. When you look at this map, this is our road conditions. Green is good here, red is bad, orange is in the middle, so when you lay those two together, it gives us an idea where to look at for our next projects coming forward. So that kind of developed this map here for our street products, our phone street ones. The first one that we're looking at was a petition project up on Elm Street. We're looking at doing a cul-de-sac up there. The next one would be Third Street Northeast, basically a continuation of the projects that we've done on Third Streets. We're looking at these next three blocks. This would be a street and utility portion of it. Over on Fourth Avenue Northeast, Community Perspective Coburn's is up over here, the middle school is right down here. This section of road, in the wintertime, heats up, so the storm sewer is actually about an inch and a half or so above where it heats up about an inch and a half, so we have difficulties getting ice off of that road, so that's why that one is a little bit in here. Third Avenue Northeast, this is kind of a carryover from 2015. If you recall, we did not order that project in just due to the funds, so we brought that one over again to this year, looking at possibly doing it. This is a street and water main. Here, there's a private water service that comes up Fourth Street that serves a couple houses on that section. Fourth Street Northwest is another section that we're looking at doing that goes one block just north of Highway 27. There's a water line there that's been giving us problems, about a break every year is what we've been seeing on that one. So that one's time to get replaced as well. Now, one thing I will note on all of these projects, it's more than what we can afford, but we want to look at getting pricing a little bit closer to what we've got right now, see what we can actually afford. So tonight, we'll be looking at requesting feasibilities on those to see if we can afford them and if they're, you know, cost effective. But the one, what really want to touch on the most is the one that was petitioned up on Elm Street here. Elm Street was a road, was a private road prior to November of 1995. That's when it was petitioned to go into the township. In 2003, that portion of the area of Riverwood was annexed into the city. At that point in time, we extended sewer and water down Elm Street to get it to what you see today. This is a aerial photo or aerial imaging of what the topo looked like in 2002. You can see Riverwood over here on the east side, Elm Street kind of comes down through here. One thing to note, you'll see kind of dash lines right in through here. This is where the driveways and such come in with that cul-de-sac. The magenta or the pink area is what you currently see today. So you'll notice it's slightly wider, the cul-de-sac is actually bigger than what we've seen back in 2002. This is just kind of a blow up of that area, you can see where it was at. One thing to note in our 2004 is actually when the project was constructed, because it was late 2003 when it was annexed, in that project, we actually put back what was there prior to that. And there was a request by property owners to make it a little bit bigger. So if you go up there today, you'll see these little joints. Originally, we had the pavement in here, and we added what we call wings to make it a little bit wider for individuals to turn around and get through there. So, looking at the requests from the petition, what we would be looking at doing currently, there is a 66 by 66 easement through here for the cul-de-sac. That would not be big enough for a cul-de-sac that would meet today's standards. Our current ordinance calls for, sorry, our current ordinance calls for basically a 50-foot radius for the right way and a 40-foot roadway on the developments. So from the center of that cul-de-sac, you'd have to go 40 feet for the bituminous and 50 feet for the right way. So this hash mark is what's there today, and the dark line out here is where it would have to be in order to be a typical cul-de-sac road. You'll notice we'll have right-of-way acquisition that we'd have to get, there's a number of trees that would have to be removed, a number of utilities that would need to be relocated. We've got water main on the north end that would have to be extended out, storm sewer over there. But there's a number of things that would need to occur in order to make this cul-de-sac, you know, conforming. And the potential for a non-conforming lot. By acquiring this portion up here, the property just on the north side there is very close to that 20-foot setback requirement, so you'd be looking at a number of things coming into play if we were to, you know, construct a cul-de-sac as it would to be current ordinance as of today. Anybody have any questions on this? So tonight, we've got the staff requested projects, which would need a 7A's vote to move forward, and we also have the petition one, which would need a 5A's vote to move forward. The staff or the petition on this project, the Elm Street project here, that was roughly 50% of the property owners petitioned for that cul-de-sac. So if it was to move forward, we'd be looking at 5A's vote tonight.
Any questions for Greg?
Greg, I thought part of that was a request if we did not do a cul-de-sac, a final way to keep vehicles from coming down that road, whether it had to do with signage, and I know there was a petition, but isn't that what I understood, that they just want a way that you don't have trucks going down that road and turning around, and is there a way we could do some kind of study of the knowledge of traffic there so we have a better background on it? Because I'm not saying no, but I just don't know if I've got enough information. I could decision on that.
Yeah, we can do traffic council down there if that's, I mean, if we want to kind of hold off on a feasibility report until we get traffic council to see what's actually going down there.
Well, I'd rather do that than, and either way, but I'd rather do that than they have it get voted down because of some of the other things. And I'm not saying that's what's happening, because this is kind of new to us other than a request.
Yeah.
But I don't want to see it voted down and then have us find out, do a study and find out if there's all kinds of traffic there. Because if that's accurate, the information we receive from the public, I, you know, then I would have concern. I don't know for us in council if you'll say just...
Did we ask, did we talk about maybe putting some flashing lights on the Highway 10 left turn sign?
You know, I find it hard that that sign would be missed just because there's nothing else blocking that sign.
What do you think, it's only there but...
So, what I can do is I can, I can do a traffic council over there and see how many vehicles are actually going through there, to see if they're actually going down Elm Street or not. That will, that will kind of give us an indication.
I thought there was an indication that it hadn't been returned to its prior state when the utilities are equipped.
That might be an indication, but looking at, looking at this here, you know, it's actually bigger than what it was before. And I've spoken with, you know, previous staff members as well as two staff members that we have on staff now, and they both indicated the same thing.
Was it Mr. Hercock that asked about pictures last time?
Right. I don't, I don't have pictures. If somebody has them, I would love to see them, but, you know, the, what we, what we put back, as you can see, was represented by this dotted line, which was shown in the 2002 topo, and they wanted it bigger, so we added these wings out here. Because this is where the lining matched up with this.
I was just asking, because I used to have some friends that lived where you turn to the right.
Yep.
Been a number of years since they lived there, but I don't ever remember, I remember the world before the links.
Right.
That's why I was asking.
I don't hold that it is bigger and that there are pictures showing that, simply because of the mature trees on the south side. You know, it takes more than four years to get those trees that big. Say what was on the west, there were trees over here on the north.
Are you going to go ahead with the feasibility?
Well, it's on the agenda for tonight.
The feasibility is on the agenda for tonight. Does the council have a consensus on whether we want traffic council? Or do you want to discuss that at the point thing or the regular agenda?
I would kind of like to see traffic council, and if there's another way to keep people from going down there. If that's the issue, you know, we have to figure out a lot of new trucks out of there.
It comes with the wind. There's a sign there that says it is not a blue street.
There's a dead-end sign at the beginning of Elm Street, yes.
Right on Riverwood.
As you turn on.
Yeah.
So as you're looking down Elm Street, you can see dead-end.
Somebody's not going to see it until they initiate their turn.
Well, basically. But you know, that's where you always put dead-end signs. You don't put a dead-end sign on Riverwood knowing that there's a dead-end on Elm Street. So you put it so that if someone's trying to take a left, you can see it as you're turning left on that, that road that is a dead-end.
Well, if you make it larger, you're going to encourage more trucks going back there. There's going to be nothing to inhibit them. Right now, they know it's a difficult place to turn around, so will probably never go back there again.
I would think once they go down, they're going to see it there. Yeah. Oh, I was out there, and I, and I talked to the residents, and I get the feeling that anybody who's ever been down there before in a combination vehicle has not been going down that twice. So it's, somebody new, it's their first time every time they...
I've just seen RVs try to get through Burger King's, or over name for drive-through in my agenda. They'll never do it again.
As you're coming north, if you look here, you can see this is the dead-end sign right there. You're facing north. As you continue traveling, you know, as you look down, you can clearly see the dead-end sign.
That sign we're on, right here, the telephone pole there, it would be much more visible.
Normally, you don't put them that close, because you don't have time, as you enter the street, you don't have time to react to it. Normally, those signs that are right next to the telephone pole, those get missed.
Can you put two of them up?
But I can see somebody heading south, not seeing that sign.
Heading south, maybe.
I think the majority of the go-down are know are coming from the south or going north.
They're coming from the east, going west on Riverwood.
Right, going north.
Going north on Riverwood. I think the majority of them, I bet you're at least 90, 95%, there are very few people that are going to come from the south and turn down there.
True.
I mean, from the north, going south and turning...
Those are going to be local traffic coming from, from the north coming south. That's going to be local traffic. The out-of-towners, those are going to be coming from County Route 76 that miss that turn. And as you can see, there's plenty of, there's plenty of open space to be able to visualize and see that sign.
I think if you're... By my, I think the goal is to not have people turning around with big stuff down there. True, to me, it's finding a solution on signage.
You're a five-time road on the sign that...
Yeah, right, and then give them a fine on the stuff down there.
So we can talk about that at our regular council meeting, if we want to do traffic council or how we want to go along with the looking at it.
Any other questions on any other street projects? Anything else on any other ones? Request to vacate right-of-way Richardson addition?
We received a request Thursday or Friday of last week that would be asking you to move to the regular agenda to receive it, but it's for the Richardson addition, to give you an idea of where that's located. The Franciscan Sisters complex is right over here. Their property in city limits is this chunk, but they also own the chunk to the south. So the area that they're looking at is this wooded area just to the southeast corner of their forest parcel. It was plotted in 1893, and then in 1916, the blocks were vacated. Blocks A, B, C, and D were vacated, and Fourth Street was vacated as well. For whatever reason at the time, they did not vacate the avenue as well as 12th Avenue, and of course, the 10th Avenue up on the, on the north. So, the request that we received is to vacate, you know, those avenues so that they don't have any, so that we don't have any right-of-way in that area. I don't see a need to have it there if it ever develops into anything. It would have to get plotted at that point in time, and so to have this, this right-of-way kind of hanging out there doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So tonight, the request would be to receive the petition and direct it to the planning commission for their review and public hearing to hold that.
Greg, I was driving around back there. Do you know where the cemetery and the garden are back there? Is that, and the old, where the tennis courts were? It's kind of thinking.
Believe, these are the tennis courts. Because in the community gardens back...
Then I wasn't far enough.
The cemetery, I think, is right over here, is it not? If I remember correctly, yeah.
Because that's right on Highway 10, right where they come over the overpass at the airport.
This is 10, yep, and then this is Fourth Street, the overpass right here, yeah. St. Otto's is up in this area, just to the right, right across from the Golf Field, back in the corner of the little country's. That's the area where Richardson used to be.
So whatever happened with the idea or thought maybe of having that loop around the city to go down and across and around 18th Street?
Across on 8th and San?
Well, I thought we were talking about going farther south on the airport road, Fourth Street.
Oh, and then back, back...
Back to 18th Street?
Yep.
To 3rd Street?
Yep.
Some of that known road.
And that's still a possibility. This, that would have no bearing.
Well, I said I don't know with 11th to come back up to 76 or 1st Street or whatever, or go or cross road through there. But that would be past the overpass, I suppose, where you wouldn't use 11th anyhow for a cross River Street.
Sure, you'd have to somehow get back to the fourth in order to get through there. I don't, I don't see a purpose for any of that right-of-way on the south side.
I was going to talk to one time about having a loop to go around that little section of town. So I'd say 100 years down the road.
Well, not even 100. Well, not even a hundred. What about your long-range plan of another well site? And we maybe want to preserve those right ways?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't connect anything on, on either side. If we were to get down to airport for a, a new well site, you know, we would likely come down here and get on the, the Minna dot right of way. So we would use.
Because we're coming down Third Street, right?
Well, we'd come down Third Street, we'd have to jump over probably the fourth because of the, the cornhouse, we wouldn't be able to underneath it. And then we'd follow fourth all the way down until we get over here, go down the, this is Minnesota Powers easement. We'd likely work with them to get easement across that, go south and then cross to the airport.
So there would still be room to get that accomplished if we did vacate these?
Yes. Those, the easement or the right of way that we currently have go east and west into here. So it really doesn't give us an option to use even if we were to, to keep them for that desired purpose of the route. What we're looking for is a north-south road, and that really doesn't provide anything in there.
You're just asking for the planning, we should recommend the planning commission look at this tonight.
Yep, I'm asking as to send it to the planning commission to review.
I'm in favor of that.
Do you have one more question? Any other questions? Not, we'll move on to Franklin on tour advertising.
Do you have my memo that I did regarding the lease agreement and advertising agreement? Steve Anderson is here with Franklin Altor. Do you have any questions? As you know, we have a billboard that sits on city property now, so it's a salt sand story building on the way to Kemp. And a few things that could happen, like if it hasn't been taken down, not allowing, you could do a new lease agreement with them. You could get eighteen hundred dollars for five years, two thousand dollars for the next five years. Or you could do advertising, you know, allow them to keep the sign in exchange for that, give us a billboard somewhere else. Do some advertising for the city such as industrial park or golf course or a combination of golf or whatever. So it's really up to you how you want to handle it. I gave you a few options here. Steve has taken a look at them and feels that, you know, we came up with a proposal when we met with him a few times and talked about this, so it's really up to you on what you'd like to do at this point. You've got, you know, several alternatives that you could go through. My recommendation is to go ahead with the lease, again, on the, the sign that's currently there and advertise, you know, it's industrial park property, golf course, whatever. Work with Franklin Altor, figuring out what, how you want to handle that. It would give us a set location for a sign if they move it around, and it may not be the best thing in the world to do, apparently. And they've done that with other situations under businesses and, and moving it to different locations, you know. Try to put it within a twenty-five mile radius of, of the city of Little Falls, so that we get some, some coverage out there. You have my memo, you have the, those leases that are here, fully put them over, you know, they're weighted a lot towards the company, obviously. But, you know, if this is what you'd like to, a direction you'd like to go, any information from us to do that, so.
Any questions, concerns?
I would say that they're weighted more in our favor than they were the last ten years. For one thing, and the other thing is with our changes at the golf course and whether zoo and other things we could take advantage of. I think that a moving sign may be benefit, beneficial to us for more people to see. And I guess my concern would be some of the things that have been brought up earlier this evening about whether or not it was legal in the first place and do we have to make some sort of a inclusion of non-conforming sign or, or whatever to make it? Because my understanding is, as a council, we can, that's our option.
Right, I, I think my understanding was this sign was put in before we ever had a sign ordinance. If that's inaccurate, then we, then we need to look at it. Because my information was, this was, when it was put in, it was compliant. If it wasn't compliant, if we did have a sign ordinance, then it was prohibited in billboards, that changes where we're at. So I think at this point, that's something that, you know, we need to look at before we reach a conclusion on this.
Plus the fact the ordinance was put in place because we didn't want billboards within the city limit. So, you know, we could say, yes, we're going to benefit from this if we leave it there advertising it. But really, the ordinance was put in there to keep billboards out, so we have to look at it that way too.
But also the ones that are there that were grandfathered in.
Well, this one isn't grandfathered.
How long has it been in? Is it an uncle in?
Well, I mean, we have the opportunity, we don't, we can't say it has to stay there. You know, if you're looking at it as grandfathered, it has to stay there. So it doesn't fall under that, that's what I mean. But we still have to look at why the ordinance was placed to begin with.
See, it doesn't have to stay, right, your lease is at an end, so if it was compliant when it was put in with the ordinance, you could elect to renew the lease. But you could choose not to renew the lease just because you decided you don't want to renew the lease. So those are two, two separate issues, but I think the big thing is, did we have a sign ordinance then? Is the big question, and I, you know, we got in our, in our memo here that it was before we ever had a sign ordinance. So I think we might need to do some research as far as not just who and what went, but when did the building, and things actually get hammered into the ground or driven into the ground.
And if we did find that it wasn't there before the sign ordinance, could the council have the power to approve a non-conforming?
You would, you would have to basically give yourself a variance, and I think that would be probably unwise. Don't put it delicately.
Well, the, the signs expired for about five days, and I'm assuming we don't get the cutting torches off there on, you know, the day of.
Right, no, I mean, I, I think.
I think, I think everybody would agree that due process is, is part of the way it works. So, and everybody has all of the due process rights. So, you know, I, I think that based on what I heard, my understanding is this sign's been up before the ordinance was there, and it was allowed. I mean, if, if that was not allowed, we've got a whole heck of a lot of them in this common, and it's the same problem. And I can't believe that that's the case, that, that somehow this staff was allowing sign after sign after sign after sign, knowing that the ordinance did allow it. I can't believe that happened. So there was a point, I think, that, that, that signs were allowed in this time. We need to do a little more research and come back to maybe at your next meeting at home and, and do something. If you have any specific questions for Steve, you know, let's, let's talk about those. But again, I think that, you know, we'll do a little research on, on the time when this was put in. We'll have to talk to Franklin or whoever put it up at the time, you could block or whoever it was at the time, but, you know.
That's going back.
And come back and, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, is going back.
And come back and, and with some information. But again, I mean, yes, it's expired, but I know the sign's not coming down tomorrow. We'll go through that, through the process, and whatever happens is the direction that we'll come back to, with some recommendations on it.
I agree, I think we should go, you know, do that, we're all that you're saying, check it out, make sure, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that sign can stay there until we get all the logistics done. I'm in favor of the advertising, because I think it'd be great benefit. And if it comes out that that sign is legal and it was there, then I think we should do that with you, with that part of it.
Mr. President.
Steve, do you have any idea when, when that was put in?
Well, we got some permits dated in eighty-five, and the signs preceded that. And it was, we transferred or bought them from the previous owners at that time, so it could have been in the seventy, I don't know when.
Right.
The, the permits transferred at eighty-five, and I guess I wasn't around at that time, so I don't know.
Right.
And we had trail of permits and, and permit transfers from previous signs and things like that, from, and so I don't know when they provisioned with them.
Plus, I don't know if you guys originally put it in, or you had something on file on an install date, but not different. You bought it pre-existing?
Yeah, we got, we had five permits.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I just went through and there was permits and state permit, city permit, and I'm assuming it might have been even built. Matter of fact, it was even the city, I don't know.
Mr. President, may I make a quick comment?
No, not right now. You had your three minutes, thanks.
But you allow people to talk, including this gentleman, who's not.
We asked some questions, it's concerning his.
Right, but I want to tell you.
That's fine, thank you, Robin. You had your three minutes, thanks.
I spoke with Rich Carlson and he said.
Anybody else have any other questions?
They had no intention of re-upping this lease.
The agreement already expired.
The current one has expired.
It has expired.
September thirtieth.
So we're, we're looking at trading the rent for a ten by thirty-six sign?
All right, yeah.
And and that's going to be in place for two years?
As long as.
Unless you choose to move stuff around.
Well, we did it two years because the, the printing has to be redone about every two years.
Okay.
So at that time, you can take a choice, and I thought it'd be good, you guys can kick it around at that time and put a new ad on it. I'll cover the cost of the ads every two years if you want to do more than that, which is a production charge. But that's about the time they last, so I thought that'd be a good time. You can refresh your advertising campaign or select to take the cash value or whatever seems to be appropriate in two years.
And what is it, let's say we just wanted to wrap the sign for me, somebody else owns it, and you want a ten by thirty-six sign for two years, what does that cost?
I can't speak for other companies, but.
I, I mean, a, a different landowner, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to separate the, the ownership of the sign.
Okay, I guess I'm at.
The city comes to you.
Yep.
Okay, it, it's not on our sign, it's assigned somewhere else, and we want to advertise our zoo for two years, ten by thirty-six sign. What does that cost roughly?
Really depends on where it's at. It's going north. It's more money than it is coming south.
Okay, give me a ballpark, please.
Eight hundred dollars. Three hundred to eight hundred dollars a month.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a nice bargain, and I know that for us to put the sign up, because I know that the C P V has had signage up. The golf course has had a signage up, so we're trying, the zoo, so we're trying to find a way to save taxpayers some money, but evidently, that's not a good thing. You know, I didn't understand the problem.
I just wanted to.
Oh, no, I, I'm glad you did that. I, that's, I wasn't directed at you, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's a valid point. What, what it costs us to do that sign?
Minimum three. Minimum thirty-six hundred, we're, I mean, we're getting.
A year.
Right, right.
But that's not, the sign's not going to stay in one place for two years. That's going to bounce around.
Yeah, we call it a space available.
Right.
And we'll, if, if we get a, as we say, a paying client, but once that board, they commit to that board for whatever their contract is, we'll bump into another spot. And then, you're ready, they want to be on a south side. You really asked us to try to get the premium site that we've, that we have.
Right.
For this, and we couldn't do that. You could pay a little more money and get a premium site on this, but we can't give that one.
So.
But we're giving, we're giving you a, a value, a cash value or pretty much double that in advertising value.
So if we want to advertise the golf course on there, that sign you're going to produce for two years. If you produce the one sign, you'll have it here for six months, you move it over there for three months, move it up wherever there's available, but it's going to be that same sign. So it's not three months we have the golf course, three months we have the zoo, and three months we have our industrial parks. It's, we picked the sign we want for two years, you'll produce that if you want to change. Then we got a fee to change what we put on the sign.
Yeah, within two years.
Right. So every two years we can change it up, this two years is golf course, next two years it'd be something else. So that's where the two years.
I don't think that makes sense to me.
Right.
Just now the.
One question.
Monitoring it is a concern, and we need to have a plan to, you know, space available and.
That's my question.
We say the one day it's gone, we need verification that it's somewhere else. How are we going to do that?
What happens if there's no space available? What happens if your buyers that get all the signs up and all of a sudden, we've got this and there's no space available, then what happens?
Well, I guess it does a deal. It's never happened in my three years of trying to advertise, but if it does, we, we'll work that out or pay the cash value. What I put on the contract, when I'm talking to Dan, I put in that certain size of ten six thirty-six. We have about four different sized signs around. And if it came to where we, we ran out of that time, we'll print you a ten by thirty to continue that. Because we got, we got, like I said, four different sized signs, some of them are going to be old.
I just wondered.
So that's, that's how we covered that, because Dan had the same concern. I said, we'll, we'll print up another size if we run out of that one to make sure that we got coverage year round. And if something, if business is that good, we'll, we'll work with you on the other. Probably, it's been a long discussion, but how far from Little Falls would these signs have to be?
Twenty-five miles.
Twenty-five miles from the south? Well, I put twenty-five mile radius on it, and I know we have signage down in the Rice area, you know, and to be right here is not always, depends on what you're advertising, sometimes you'll let people know that. I'd like to see one fifteen miles on the other side of Genoa in between.
We'll come back with the conversation connection.
So I think we're all pretty much on the same page on the trade value. Discharge of firearms in city limits, chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt, before you, Greg Kim and staff was kind enough to put together, it's a sign that they posted very differently.
We posted a number of those signs, you know, we've got the ordinance in place for the discharge of firearms. And so we posted those signs at the two boat landings in Little Falls, you know, the west side and the east side. Belt Ferry Park, posted one there, and then two signs on the north side of Highway ten and two signs on the south side of Highway ten in between the two bridges that cross Mystic River. So that was basically to start educating hunters that, you know, you can't discharge firearms within the city limits of Little Falls. And those are the, the locations that most people, you know, enter the, the area, whether it's watercraft or on those island areas.
So in conjunction with the signs, I met with the sheriff and he allowed us to use his boat. And on opening morning, we put two officers out, both Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and the mission was just to get the message out. Let people know city limits have changed, can't discharge the firearms in the city. And the big problem was always on the islands just south of the ten overpass, so we kind of focused on that area. We put it out on social media as much as we could, and it went, from, from our perspective, it went very well. Talking to the officers that were out there, there were only a couple individuals at each landing. And we had a couple complaints later on, later in the morning, opening morning, and we were able to, I don't think we were ever able to make contact with the individuals out there, it sounded like they were coming from somewhere on the river, they were on a boat, and they were coming out that, around to the east side. But we did the best we could, we tried to get the word out, we tried to address each complaint as they came up. It was, from our perspective, it was a much better year. I spoke with Joyce Cuskey, the local conservation officer, she said she did not get a complaint this year. I spoke with Joyce Cuskey, the local conservation officer. She said she did not get a complaint this year, which was virtually unheard of. So she was very pleased too with the efforts that we put forward, so.
So these signs are posted, is that correct?
Yes, they're posted.
Yes, they are posted. All of them are posted.
I just personally, like, just go right by this because it doesn't really scream no hunting or anything. I don't know if we could put a screaming no hunting sign with it, but just seeing the notice, I might have had to right by this. And then I've been arrested.
We wanted to be careful because there are areas that are open.
Sure.
For hunters, so we don't want to infringe on anybody's hunting rights, but at the same time we wanted to educate. But if, if we, you know, if that's the direction you want to go.
But no hunting city limits or something.
Just something to draw there. I, like, like Jeremy says, if we put no hunting city limits and then have the notice. I don't know. And if this is working and you guys are patrolling it, I'm fine with that. I think where Kathy was going, and I won't speak for her, but she spoke to me before that, you know, if, she asked if you had a boat and she might be able to write a grant possibly for a boat for the police department. I don't know if you have any desire for that, if that would help so you don't have to.
I think working with the sheriff is a, is a good way to do it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we can try and write a grant, but the boat's there, it's available. And then we store it all here, we're going to use it. And if we have a boat, then we need to use it and we should be going in the water. So I guess that's a discussion for another time.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of concern about this, but interestingly enough, I stopped at Bell Ferry Junction this morning, which is at the north end of the city, to ask if there had been any stubble, like from any walkers coming through the food station, gas station, so, or whatever. And he said, no, there really hasn't been. There, he said he's heard of, or, or, he said he hasn't heard much, but as far as shooting, but people coming in and out. He sells rifles and some pants and all that kind of stuff. And he, he, he.
Okay. If anybody has any other ideas, certainly willing, I mean, with signs, we can certainly come up with something else and make it an attachment to this, put it above it.
Right.
We can do that, talk to, off the record too.
What can they do? They can hunt on.
They can hunt on, on this half of the river, but not this half.
Because this is. How do you know where the middle of that river is?
It's part of the channel. You're out there like a.
The air is falling across, you're outside.
Where's that? Five hundred feet from a house.
Pardon me?
How, how are we with climbing it then, five hundred feet from a house? Is that the type of regulation?
Um, I believe it is, Tony.
I don't know if it's five hundred or three hundred, five hundred sounds right.
But I think with the limits here, if you're in some segments of the river here, from here to south, the golf course. People could be shooting off their dock, but chances there are that within five hundred feet of their house. Well, I know there, we've had issues in the past where people have called and said, you know, led is, you know, hitting my house, you know. I didn't hear those complaints this year, but we have heard that in the past.
That must be the reason I was so careful. I think you tell the people that listen to you.
I, I hope that, that resolves it just by getting the message out. Try hard to get the message out.
Greg, even under that legend where you have, um, Little Falls city limits, maybe you could have just no hunting, right? I mean, rather than, uh, so that they know that everything that shaded that color.
But these signs are, these signs are already in place, right? Those are already in place. So these are already up.
You have, you just have a hunting over the top of it.
Well, I, I, I'm looking at the map, I, I think some of this is county, and then when you start getting up here, some is state land, so we show orange. Yet even on the west half, like, the rest of that is still not legal. We just want to show the city property.
We're just showing a city property.
I, I think the line where hunting is not allowed is further north, for, is my guess.
Further north than the north edge of the city limits here?
Right. Well, you know, we're showing all, all the way down south of the, the Highway ten bridge over the river. Okay? And part of that is county land, which I'm sure, I'm guessing you can't hunt there. You know, so our line of hunting is actually further north than what we're showing here. We can't, people can't hunt all of this on the west half, even though that's all we're showing.
Well, we're showing us the city limits.
Right.
And.
I realize that.
And our, and our ordinance only pertains to the city limits, so we didn't really want to get into all the areas that we're hunting and doing, because they didn't also get into that five hundred foot rule for discharge of firearms.
And it's up to.
Thank you. No hunting city limits.
Yeah.
Put it above this sign. Here you go. City limits are.
Yeah.
There's no hunting. Anybody else have any other questions for Greg or we're good there? Moving on, city code, chapter two update.
Couple of years ago, we had some legal research done by American Legal Publishing Corporation through the league of Minnesota cities to take a look at our city code and come up with some recommendations as far as some adjustments that they felt were necessary to the code in order to bring in more in compliance with the state law and law of writ. We've seen a couple of those ordinances come through. We did a liquor rewrite, liquor ordinance rewrite a few months ago. Uh, you know, another real thick ordinance, and that was basically a mirror with the state law and the delete Minnesota cities recommended. Uh, another part of the recommendation was to take a look at our chapter two. And there were some, some weaknesses there in a couple areas and what we did is we took a, a look at all of chapter two and brought it, tried to bring more compliance with current practices and state statute. Uh, we also incorporated some suggestions from American Legal. Some of the things that we did to the ordinance, some adjustments that were made is it got rearranged. So they're trying to take a look at the current city code and look at it as far as this city code, you gotta, you'd have to jump around. But we rearranged it, I think, to make it a better, more useful ordinance. Uh, the city council, under the city council, we removed language that was in the current ordinance that says that a special meeting, a notice of special meeting could be waived when a written waiver of notice has been assigned by all members of the council. I don't know how that's legal. So we took that out. So, you know, you, if there's a special meeting, you've got to post notice for it. Uh, for some reason, our court, the current ordinance, it's probably really old language and said it could be waived. Uh, departments, we updated to include a better outline of functions currently performed by the department. And we added some emergency management language, some additional emergency management language. Boards and committees and commissions, we updated to include a number of members and the term length for all of those commissions, committees, and boards. Uh, the zoning board of appeals was deleted. Uh, that's currently in chapter eleven of the city code and the planning commission fills this role. So it wasn't, it was duplicated, so it didn't even be in both places. The housing advisory and appeals board was deleted. That is now included in the housing maintenance code. We approved that earlier this year. It was one of the, the thick ordinances that we did earlier this year. So that was deleted. Referral of special assessments, we modified it to accurately reflect the deferred assessments are being handled. And a military referral has been added pursuant to state law, so we added that, add that in. Employee response time was changed for the fire department. Originally, I think it's at forty-five minutes. It practices ten minutes for bank sports. So we, we put the ten minute timeline in there. Franchise agreements, some minor language modification in there. And under the area of all the trusts that we have, we made consistent wording language for each one of those trusts. Those are the, the main items and, and as you can see, they're not substantive necessarily, but I just wanted to give you a basic idea of what some of the changes were that we made in chapter two. Recommendation is to introduce it the same day so we get the ordinance, the ordinance adopted. It's on your agenda nine B in. At nine B. Do you have any questions? Uh, we had several meetings, all the drafts, I mean, I've got this much paper from the drafts that we, various drafts that we've had. Staff has had several times to talk about it, so.
Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, so again, it's under regulations.
Very done. We'll move on to other.
Um, we today received a request from an employee who has a family member that has an issue, a medical issue. Some employees have contacted this person about wanting to donate time to him to allow him to have additional time off. Um, our current policy does not allow for that. Our current policy allows for donations of time when it's the employee themselves that are having a, a, a medical issue. Um, it doesn't provide or allow for anything if it's independent of, or a family member of the employee. So, you know, the request would be from the council is, do you have a feeling one way or the other, if you'd like us to look at revising that policy possibly or look at different options, or are we, you know, pretty much set on just allowing it for the employee themselves?
This employee, it's been going on for quite some time, I think since right after, it was probably May, June? Around June, I think it was in that area, through July. And, and this person has been taking a, a lot of time off that he has cued him. But he's coming to the end of the time that's available. There's still the issue. And, uh, we can't mention his name, can't mention, you know, the illness, any of that stuff. We've got EPLAs and various private, privacy, I don't think of all here, but, uh, anyways, using, using up the time that's available to this employee. When that runs out, we have employees that would like to donate time so that this person can continue to be on the payroll, continue to be paid, at least something to pay health insurance and things that he has to do and done. So the question, if we do have a policy, but like we're, that's just for the employee, it doesn't relate to the employee's immediate family.
If somebody's willing to donate it to him, why wouldn't?
How much time can an employee donate to another person?
Our, our current policy is sixteen hours of vacation.
Because otherwise they can't, we could donate twelve. But it was our sick leave that we donated, not. Couldn't donate annually if you could donate sick leave. You know, we get sick leave annually, but two separate.
That's why we work it out.
And you could donate to an employee you're working with or his immediate family, his wife or his kids. You couldn't donate to one of his daughter-in-laws or, or, we drew the line where you could only do it to his, the spouse or one of the children that was, and you could up to twelve hours per person you could donate. Which I think is a good deal. I mean, if you have the time and you want to donate it to somebody, so be it. I mean, why, why not?
Is there any, and this sounds really trivial, but is there any thought to the pay discrepancy? Like if you have a minimum wage person donating forty hours at nine fifty and the employee is getting twenty-seven fifty?
We, when we initially enacted or adopted the policy, we talked about all of those things, because you can have it both ways. You can have someone that is a higher wage earner that is getting, you know, less hours because of the pay discrepancy. You can have it both the other way, where somebody is getting more hours because of the pay discrepancy. So that's why we set it at, at, you know, an hour, a flat hour, it was hour per hour.
Otherwise it'd be a keeping nightmare.
Well, it would be, but I mean, you can do it, but, yeah.
How do we, and I get you can't say. So then basically, we're going to have to entrust you to know the situation that warrants that. And frankly, it doesn't bother me that I don't know, but what I worry about is, we can do this, and it seems like a great idea, don't get me wrong, but once we start effectively, we have full sick leave for everybody on city staff. Once we set the precedence that we can do this.
Yeah, they have to use a call up. They have to be out.
Have you seen the lyrics ever?
Yeah, before they get anything, anything more sold.
And typically it has to be for a catastrophic type illness. It's, you know, it, it.
Okay.
It can't be for a minor illness. It has to be something.
Or, or right, and, and ridiculousness, right? I mean, sitting here, and, and I trust me with doing this, but I, how do I know the employee's not distraught that, that they're cat is sick? You know.
Well, we had people that would, they would, as soon as they, we got four hours every two weeks of sick leave. There were people, as soon as they had eight hours, they were calling in sick. Now, the rest of us employees would, one, this happened to one guy, he got sick. So he asked if people would donate. Well, why should I donate twelve hours to him where he's used it up every time as soon as he gets it, just because he went drinking last night and didn't feel good tomorrow morning or whatever? He would kind of get turned out. I mean, they, we just wouldn't, everybody, every individual had his choice if he wanted to donate or not. But somebody like that didn't get much donated to him because he used it. He never tried to save any for himself. I mean, and that's.
Are you looking for a change, are you looking for a change of policies at?
Well, I think right now it would be just a consensus from the council, you know, to direct staff to look at some options on what you may or may not do. Because there are, you know, some downsides to it as well, and I hate to say that.
Exactly. I can see that going through a catastrophic illness with, with his wife or his child and then loses a job and everything else. When there are people that have got oodles of time that, that was a here, please take it. And that may be the only way that I could help that person deal with that situation by saying, here, take some of my time because you need it for the night right now. I mean, I mean, that's, that's human.
I mean, wait, example, five scenario.
Do we need some sort of action tonight, or are you just, because I don't know how soon this person's going to need it. Um, and we don't want him to run.
Doesn't need it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that with a reservation. I think we, we feel that.
Sounds like.
Yeah, Frank?
Has this come up before?
Well, we have the policy, so yes, we have had it before.
Where there was someone that wasn't an employee, but like a close person?
No, no, we, the, the times it's been used, it's been for an employee.
I would worry if it came up a couple of times before and we denied, or they weren't allowed to use it, and then all of a sudden in this case we're changing it. But if that's not the case, now's probably a time to look at it.
We, I mean, we have had requests, we've had a question before if they could do this, and it's like, well, the policy currently states it's for employees only. And then it was dropped, it was never pursued. In this particular case, you know, it's been pursued.
Yeah, strictly a volunteer. Nobody asks them. If you want to, you can. If you don't, you.
It's also a case where when you have catastrophic circumstances, I think before catastrophic.
Right, I.
Something that I know in the school district, they are allowed to give up.
Yeah, that's.
And I would need to see that to understand the way.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Can anyone else start anything? Dan?
I just want to welcome Jonathan and Nate.
I figure we can introduce them on live TV. Obviously, they want to find out who the good he is. We'll stand adjourned to seven thirty.